Good afternoon, we're convening the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts here in Senate Conference Room 224 on our 3pm agenda. Although we have our regular agenda in which we have a number of bills this afternoon, and then we also have a decision-making-only agenda which are carryover bills from prior hearing. So we'll get to all of those at the very end. But I'll note we have a number of bills on the agenda, so for those who haven't submitted written testimony, please do so. And for those who have, we do have that, so if we can keep our in-person testimony concise and to the point, so we can make sure we have time to get through all the testifiers, that would be really helpful. So with that, let's go to our first measure, Senate Bill 385 relating to transportation, which establishes registration requirements and driver's licensing requirements for the operation of electric rickshaws. And testifying first on 385 is the Department of Transportation.
Chair, Vice Chair, members, do you have these numbers?
Thank you. Up next is Las Vegas Tuk Tuk LLC. Alex, close the door. In support, that's all the testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify this afternoon? If not, are there any questions? If not, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 586 relating to transportation, which specifies that a certificate of inspection shall not be issued, the vehicle is not equipped with a noisy muffler or exhaust system, requires rules regarding safety check inspections to ensure that motorcycles, mopeds, motor vehicles are not equipped with noisy mufflers and exhaust systems, and suspends or revokes or refuses renewal of a permit for an official inspection station on multiple violations. And testifying first is SEMA in opposition, and one individual in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Oh, DOT.
Do these guys in support?
Thank you. That's all the testimony we have. Anybody else? Are there any questions?
You know what, I don't have his testimony, DOT. You got company, unless you want to tell us. Oh, sorry. No, no, this is not him. Yeah.
586, yes. Sorry, Chair.
Thank you.
There you go. Oh, yeah. All right, any questions on 586? If not, let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 587 relating to transportation, which increases the minimum and maximum fines for violating provisions relating to noisy mufflers. And testifying first on 587 is 808 Streets in opposition, Ohana Tinting LLC in opposition, SEMA in opposition, and we have testimony. Let's see. Mostly in opposition, and a couple in support and with comments from a number of individuals. So that said, is there anybody with us here in the room or online wishing to testify on SB 587? If not, are there any questions? All right, if not, thank you. Let's...
Do you have a testimonial?
Are you here to testify on SB 587?
Jackson says SB 586 corresponds with HB 468. I'm raising their question.
We were on, we just went through that bill, similarly SB 587 we're on right now, which also deals with noise. If you'd like to testify on that one.
I came in a few minutes later, you're over with? Really?
You're welcome to testify on SB 587.
Uh, yeah.
Please come forward. If you could identify yourself.
I won't be interrupting me.
No, no, please, come forward. If you could just identify yourself.
My name is Edward Halls. I've been in Hawaii for about 40 years. Came here to pursue a professional surfing career.
Yes, I have a seat.
And it started with my longtime friend Rick Landiardi, and then he turned me on to Calvin Seig, who's my representative for Manoa and Makiki, no, Bouilei. And then he said, "I'm not the author of this bill. You've got to talk to Jackson Sayama." So Jackson calls me yesterday, said, "Oh, no, I'm not the author of it." But some guy named, excuse me, not some guy, a senator named Maury Waki, memory serves me. Is he present?
She's not.
She, excuse me.
Yeah. But if you could, maybe, let us know what position you're taking on the measure and share your thoughts.
How many minutes can you give me? One, two, five? Not that.
Well, we'll prorate your time considering, I think this is probably your first time testifying, so we've been limiting everyone to about a minute.
Oh, really? Okay. There's three articles here that I wanted to paraphrase for you, but I won't. They all talk about other cities in the US and in Great Britain that are accomplishing what I'm here to talk about, is to cut the excessive noise from unmuffled cars, trucks, motorcycles, and mopeds. Especially two-stroke mopeds are horrific. And possibly because I ruptured both airdrops being held underwater at Sunset Beach for a long time. I'm super sensitive to sound, but also friends are saying the same thing. I was recently almost run over by an EMT ambulance that came up behind me and turned on their siren. The past two months, I've been trying to get a hold of a guy named Paragasso Arnold. He retired. He turns me over to Dr. Jim Ireland. I talked to Jim recently. He said, "You know what, Edward? I've done what I can do." I said, "No." Paragasso said I could have a meeting, face to face with the two ambulance drivers, and it never happened. So that one has kind of been tabled. But I'm going to get that meeting, because they almost ran me over with an excessive siren. Those EMT sirens are so much louder than they were when I got here in the 70s. I think the decibel level is maybe 80, 85, 90?
So if I can paraphrase for you, because we want to make sure everyone has the same amount of time to testify, you're, you want to lower exhaust noise, is that right?
Specifically cars that are not adhering to the standards, and then the kids, the punk-ass kids that are, excuse my language, are bad language. You know who they are.
Okay.
They're un-muffling the cars, they're road monster cars that their parents gift them, and they turn the volume on the radio, and when they go back by with that unmuffled noise, it's all new experience, and the noise coming from their stereo, it is deafening. I'm sensitive, yes, but it's deafening. These three cities, including Great Britain, they use on the corners cameras that now have a sound device. That's why I propose it.
So we got you, got you on the bill. Let me stop you. There'd be an opportunity. Folks want to call you up for further questions. We can continue the conversation, but let me get through the rest of the testifiers to make sure that everyone gets the same amount of time. So appreciate your testimony.
Protocol. I really hear on my bicycle, so excuse me.
Okay, anyone else wishing to testify on SB 587? You're with us or online? If not, all right, are there any questions? All right. Let's move on to the next measure. For all those in the audience, we will be coming back at the end of our agenda. We have a number of measures on it this afternoon to vote on these measures, on these bills, once we get through them all. So next is Senate Bill 1084 relating to transportation, which requires dealers selling new trucks and SUVs and so forth to disclose to prospective consumers that larger vehicles tend to pose an increased danger to pedestrians. Testifying first on 1084 is the Hawaii Bicycling League. In support, Hawaii Auto Dealers Association. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Pavlicek. I'm here on behalf of the Hawaii Automobile Dealers Association. Since it's the first time I've had the opportunity to testify in front of a Senate committee on behalf of HADA, we just thought it was very important that you know we want to be a resource collaborator and help shape good policy. We respectfully oppose this measure. There are so many factors that weigh in on accidents, but ultimately, we are very committed to pedestrian safety and look forward to working closely with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the Alliance for Automotive Innovation.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, if you want to join the Alliance for Automotive Innovation, send us a message.
Thank you. We have one individual in support. Is there anyone else here with us wishing to testify on this measure this afternoon? If not, are there any questions? All right, if not, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to Senate Bill 1406 relating to commercial motor vehicle fines, which amends the law relating to vehicle weight violations by replacing the fine schedule and increasing the potential fines based on the multitude and magnitude of vehicle weight violations. Testifying first on 1406 is DOT.
Thank you, Chair. Do these guys in support?
Thank you. It looks like that's all the testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? If not, any questions? If not, all right, let's move on to 1405 relating to commercial motor vehicle weight limits, which amends the law to be consistent with federal weight limits with respect to legal limits for gross vehicle weight and axle loads traveling on public roadways. And testifying first on 1405 is DOT.
Thank you, Chair. Do these guys in support?
Thank you. So that's all the testimony we have. Is there anyone else here on 1405? If not, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure, SB 1164 relating to motor vehicles, which requires dealers who sell new or used motor vehicles to display lifetime operating cost of the vehicle along with the purchase price. Testifying first on 1164 is the DLR Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission. Support. Office of Consumer Protection. With comments. Hawaii Auto Dealers Association.
That's our representative.
Thank you. Blue Planet Foundation in support. That's all the submitted testimony we have. Is there anyone else here wishing to comment? Good afternoon.
Senator Lee and members of the committee, I'm Joe Calavito with Hawaii State Energy Office, and I apologize, this has sort of fallen under our radar until earlier today, but we have reviewed the bill and we understand the importance of something like this in helping evening the playing field in terms of new vehicle purchases, where the upfront cost of a new zero emission vehicle may be much higher, but as many studies have shown, the lifetime costs of zero emission vehicles tend to be much lower. And so something like this could provide some transparency that could be very helpful to consumers. And the Energy Office stands ready to help in developing some of the technical details involved with identifying lifetime costs and whatnot. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on this measure? If not, are there any questions?
I have a question for the representative from HADA. I read through your testimony. How do you determine for a used vehicle, like, the lifetime operating cost, like, where do you get that information from? Because it varies by vehicles. Is there like a national database that your group would look at?
I mean, to prepare for this testimony, we consulted with several of our members, and the feedback that I received is there is no consistent way to calculate the lifetime cost, and especially given that driving, usage, and the price of gas, et cetera, even for an electric vehicle, not knowing what the maintenance and the capabilities of the vehicle is, there isn't any consistent way to be able to do that.
And a follow-up to that, Ms. Pavlicek, is do you know other states that have any legislation like this?
Not familiar with any.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions? No, real quick, just following on that, not the EPA, the the NTSB, anyway, another federal agency requires, you know, vehicle sticker, fuel mileage, and so on and so forth. And usually, there's an associated estimated, like, fuel cost related to mileage for, you know, existing vehicle sales. I guess, based on the point that Senator Elafante raised, where you have, like, variable factors, fuel pricing and so forth, how is that actually set? Because you're displaying or advertising an estimated fuel cost, which obviously isn't static.
I don't know how that's exactly calculated. I'd be glad to get back to you, but what I can say is the actual utilization would be different. So giving someone a picture as to what the cost might be, depending on how much you use it, is kind of different from giving them the overall picture of what the lifetime cost of the vehicle, this vehicle is. So I think it's not inconsistent that we have to calculate an estimated mileage per mile cost, but that is still different from the overall lifetime cost of everything associated with using the vehicle.
Great. Thank you. All right, further questions? If not, thanks, everybody. Let's move on to the next measure, SB 1092, which makes, relating to penalties, which makes driving without a license a civil violation, punishable by fines of not less than $50 and not more than $300. And testifying first on 1092 is the Office of the Public Defender. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chair Lee, Vice Chair Noi, members of the committee, good afternoon. My name is Lee Hyiprow. I'm the chief deputy at the Office of the Public Defender. The Office of the Public Defender strongly supports SB number 1092. A district court, the D-Walls are either charged as petty misdemeanors or misdemeanors, which, as I'm sure you know, carries jail with it. The part that, I guess the operative words are, it carries the potential of jail or the possibility of jail, which is a sign to the judge right away that they need to stop everything, and they are obligated to appoint counsel. So we're already getting counsel involved. We're getting one court date and definitely a second court date involved. And so these charges require resources from the judiciary, from offices like ourselves. The reality, however, is that these driving without license tickets are treated much like civil violations. Rarely, if ever, is jail imposed. And yet, we go through all this rigmarole because there is the possibility of jail. So it occurred to our office that, I mean, given, you know, all the resources that are allocated to these charges, it would make more sense for them to actually be civil violations. I mean, it would, the numbers that we have thus far, as rough as they are, anywhere between a third to a half of our attorney, our district court attorney's caseloads involve D-Walls. And so if this committee were to pass, or if SB 1092 passes, it would dramatically change the way district court runs. I mean, it would, it would not clear calendars, but you know, any kind of backloads in the district court, I think, would all but disappear in no time. And that way, the courts, prosecutors, and the public defenders can sort of concentrate on the more substantive charges rather than these D-Walls, which, as I said before, they really are treated as if they were civil violations right now. Again, the Office of the Public Defender strongly supports SB 1092, and I will remain here and be available for questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
Up next is DOT.
Chair, do these guys in support?
Thank you. City and County Honolulu Office of the Prosecuting Attorney. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Prosecutor and Attorney Mark Tom for the department. The department is in opposition to Senate Bill 1092. The department would note that over the last four years, according to Department of Transportation, so as far as this system, 19% of all traffic fatalities involves unlicensed driver. Now, the department is very well aware that having a license does not preclude somebody from getting into a collision, make no mistake. However, going through the driver's license process does attempt to ensure that individuals are physically fit to operate a motor vehicle, that they are also aware of the rules of the road. Many states already have these offenses charged as misdemeanors. Just similar like California, we do have an infraction. It's 286-116A, which is not having a license on your person. Although that's not the same charge, there is an infraction, just like how California does have an infraction. Would, the department would also point out that this wouldn't, might incentivize, disincentivize individuals from getting a license as if you do not have a license under 286-102 is an infraction, as imposed. It's an infraction. However, if you get a license and you're suspended or revoked because of child support payments or excessive speeding, there's a suspension, that is still a petty misdemeanor under 286-132. So having a license, getting suspended, petty misdemeanor. Not even having a license at all, infraction. We also would point out the disincentivizing is because under HP 2750 and 2020 act 59, now there shouldn't be any reason to put stoppers on infraction cases. So moving forward, individual during their license period could rack up 20, 30, 40 driving without licenses and infractions. When they're ready to go renew, they can just summarily renew without ever having to face any sanction or penalty for not ever paying the fines or not even paid attention to paying the fine. The department has no objection to removing step-up penalties for D-Walls, driving without license, or engaging in discussions on minimum and maximum penalties. However, we would ask the committee to maybe support more programs, similar like the restricted driver's license program, that will allow individuals to get a license, even though they do have stoppers, but to ensure that there is some oversight when they do get their license. I would encourage the committee to look at that, as well as allowing admin judges in the district court, which is already done, to lift stoppers on infractions, as well as V-Lash voluntary legal services. I appreciate the committee allowing me to testify on this matter.
Thank you. Finally, ACLU. In support, that's all the testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else wishing to testify this afternoon? If not, other questions? Just real quick for, I guess, prosecuting attorney and public defender. You can both hop up. What percent of all the cases, you said these are the most prolific, common cases that are out there in the system, is that right?
That's our experience, yes.
So if that's the case, what percent of these are first-time offenses versus repeat? Or do we know?
I gosh, I, that would be hard to say. I mean, we'd have to look at numbers. I can't say even anecdotally how many. There's just, it is a good fortune, as the public defender said, of driving type offenses. I can't say it's all driving without license or suspended, but we don't have numbers. Our office is.
Yeah. And is the issue here, I guess, you guys, you have multiple situations, but the level of penalty, I mean, having to go to court versus, let's say it was like a super big fine, for example, which would be probably a deterrent for anybody if it's like, you know, crazy amount of money. Is there a distinction there between those two? Between having like a, just a fine, let's say it's still a citation, so you keep people out of court, but it's also big enough that it is, you know, a meaningful deterrent, so that you're not going to end up driving without a license?
Are you saying as proposed, so keeping it as is proposed, like an infraction, and having a high fine?
Right.
Well, the only thing, and I can't speak for a public defender's point of view, but the only thing I could think of is when you have a citation, like an infraction, civil infraction, they issue the ticket. Most infractions, you have 21 days to respond or just ignore it. If you just ignore it altogether, it, after that, it goes to collections and it goes within the judiciary and it just sits as a stopper. And whether you pay it or you don't pay it, doesn't matter. So if you have a high fine, presumably, maybe people would just ignore it and just not pay it. I can't speak for every single person, but that potentially could happen.
I say this because what occurs to me while we're sitting here is, if this is truly like, you know, prolific situation in the courts, what if you did like a first-time offense, a high fine? So the entry would still be like a heavy penalty, but it wouldn't put you in the court system until you did it again, if you're a repeat offender and you go through the normal process.
There is a possible, I don't want to...
Go ahead.
Okay. The only difficult part with that is it's going to really fall on HPD. What happens is if, for some reason, you get a first offense, citation, infraction, and you pay it, and you just keep paying it all the time, or it just goes to default, HPD would have to, on the spot, look at their record and see that they had a first offense, and then issue that citation as a must-appear ticket, similar to how it is now. If you're stopped and you don't have a driver's license, they give you the citation and they give you the court date on when to show up. So HPD would be tasked now with having to determine on the road that this person doesn't have a driver's license, and previously, they were charged with this infraction. Now I need to give this citation, not the one for the infraction. I have to give the one with a specific court date. I can't speak for HPD on if that's possible or difficult. Is that fair?
Yeah, I mean, that might be a compromise somewhere down the line, but I agree with Mr. Tom. It would be hard for the officer on the ground to discern that, kind of like, you know, everything going on at the moment.
Good. Sounds like we're getting to an area that's covered by judiciary, so why don't we, I'll stop there. But thank you for entertaining. Any other questions?
Thank you.
If not, thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the next measure, SB 1147 relating to motor vehicles. It requires condo associations and planned community associations that have a service agreement with a towing company to maintain and provide to the towing company a do-not-tow list of authorized resident vehicles. And testifying first on 1147 is Honolulu Tower Aoe Aoe in opposition, White Sands Village in opposition, and six or seven other folks, individuals in opposition, as well as one person who had signed up on Zoom. That's Paul Ireland Koftenow. Are you with us?
Present on Zoom, Chair.
Please, Paul, if you're there, please go ahead.
He's not present on Zoom, Chair.
Oh, not present, I'm sorry. I said present. Okay. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure this afternoon? If not, are there any questions for, nobody was here. Okay. Let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 214 relating to public transit, which establishes the offense of interference for the operation of a public transit vehicle. Testifying first is the City and County Department of Transportation Services. In support, Honolulu Police Department in support. That's all the testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone here wishing to testify? If not, seeing as we have no one to ask questions of, let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 1243 relating to traffic control, which requires DOT to authorize state and county traffic projects to make changes to traffic flow and mitigation efforts, and prohibits contractors from charging additional fees to amend traffic flow or safety efforts. And testifying first on 1243 is DOT.
Chair, do these guys in support?
Thank you. And we have testimony and support from one individual. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on this measure this afternoon? If not, are there any questions? If not, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to SB 1056 relating to speed limits, which clarifies that the engineering study required prior to the setting of a maximum speed limit shall not apply to reductions in speed limits. And testifying first on 1056 is DOT.
Chair, do these guys in support?
Thank you. Up next is the Hawaii Bicycling League. In support. Hawaii Bike Share, or excuse me, Bike Share Hawaii. In support. Get Fit Kawai. In support. And that's all the testimony we have. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on this measure this afternoon? If not, are there any questions? All right, moving right along. Up next is Senate Bill 1502 relating to transportation, which requires hourly peer-to-peer car-sharing operators to ensure their shared car at four times the personal injury protection benefit and basic liability coverage. Testifying first on 1502 is DCCA Office of Consumer Protection. Was here early. In, oh, good afternoon.
Thank you, Chair Lee and Vice Chair and members of the committee. The Office of Consumer Protection is in strong opposition to SB 1502. This bill is a rollback of the protections that went into effect last year. We, in particular, think that the creation of this new hourly peer-to-peer car-sharing model was not contemplated and is very potentially problematic down the road. The other thing we wanted to identify was that the notion that we would charge four times the existing minimum coverage or basic liability coverage benefits is a little bit difficult for the sake of transparency for the public to follow. They would have to reference the other statutes to determine what the amount is. And as you know, the liability coverage enacted last year was $750,000. So if you multiply... So if you multiply the existing basic coverages of ten thousand by four. You're looking at, you know, a fraction of the existing basic liability coverage. Uh, that was enacted last year. Thank you. Available for questions.
Thank you. Up next is DCCA Insurance Division. Thank you. Next is the Hawaii Insurance Council.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Allison Weal, Control Hawaii Insurance Council will stand on our testimony in opposition.
Thank you. Uh. It's a quick pause. Uh, apparently AC is down. I didn't notice because I was so excited by all the testimony. Um. So apologies for the uh. Folks in the room. All right, um. Back to testimony. On Senate Bill fifteen oh two. Um, following the Hawaii Insurance Council, up next is Turo Inc. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Well, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Noe, other members of committee, David Noyagi with Turo, testifying in opposition to this measure. Um, first, I just want to acknowledge that I think the peer to peer car industry is supportive of trying to address and amend. The uh seven hundred fifty thousand dollar minimum uh that was set under Act fifty six. This puts us roughly at eighteen point seven five times. Uh, the state minimums at forty thousand dollars for bodily injury. Um, and we support holistic solutions, some of which are moving through the legislature currently. Um, however, we oppose uh SB fifteen oh two because this does not address this issue holistically. Instead, what it does is it creates a subcategory of hourly peer to peer car operators and sets them at four times the state minimums. Um, you know, should this law pass, it would allow certain peer to peer companies to uh have an advantage over other peer to peer uh companies. Um, this could result in a situation where an identical make and model car. Uh, shared for the exact same amount of time in the exact same location. Uh, with all conditions being equal, nonetheless being subject and resulting in vastly different insurance minimums. Um, we again respectfully ask for the deferral of this measure and uh should there be any questions for available? Thank you.
Thank you. I testify next is the Hawaii Association for Justice. Good afternoon.
Hello Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Evan Oye, on behalf of the Hawaii Association for Justice. Um, we testify in strong opposition to this measure, you know, it unnecessarily, as DCCA mentioned, it unnecessarily reduces. Um, the insured coverages which were implemented from last year and you know, since its implementation, the risk still remain the same to Hawaii. You know, residents and pedestrians and drivers, so. Um, you know, renting a vehicle for less than twenty four hours is no different from, you know, renting it per hour, so. Uh, you know, we at the current levels, we we recommend, you know, those stay there and uh, you know, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I testify next is Get Around. In support. Oh, good afternoon.
Hello Chair, Vice Chair, all members of the committee, thank you so much for your time uh this afternoon. Appreciate you. Sorry that the air conditioning is not working there. The electricity in Manana was not working until just moments ago, so when your AC kicked out, our lights went on. Um, testifying in strong support of this measure, thank you for hearing it today. Wanted to comment on just two specific pieces, you know, first and foremost. Um, I'm sorry, could you hear me Chair? Can can you hear me Chair and Vice Chair?
Yeah, we can, we can hear you.
Okay, um, okay, so where was I? So so two specific uh uh points of of. A consideration for you and and for the committee. Uh, Get Around is an hourly car sharing platform whose um target customers. And hosts are markedly different than other peer to peer car sharing platforms. Uh, we tend to support the uh kinds of community based and. And hourly needs that you would find in uh organizations and institutions that are supporting. Moms and pops going to grocery stores or people needing to use a truck to go to the dump. Um, and we we've shared a lot of this information in the past and happy to share it with you and your colleagues um again and whenever necessary. Um, but I think the the broader thought process around this particular measure relates to. Why uh we would support a. A premium on top of where other similar mobility options are are being insured. Um, Get Around heard the Senate and the House loud and clear in twenty twenty two when you. Suggested and legislated and when a law was signed into effect that. Identified the need to have a premium above the state minimums for peer to peer car sharing and so. We support this measure because it acknowledges that there's still a conversation that has to happen. Between the industry and the sureties and the the community and and regulators who. Who are in charge of ensuring the safety of our our community and so. Four times is not unreasonable in other municipalities and states across the country, the. Peer to peer car sharing standard insure insurance requirements are in some cases two, in some cases three times the other mobility standards and so. Our our thought process around four times was that this this kind of makes sense while empirically. There is no evidence to say that a peer to peer car sharing operator is at more risk. Um, what am I trying to say? There's no data that proves that Get Around's hosts or guests are in fact. Creating a greater risk or liability to the community, to felt the drivers or to themselves. That data is non existent.
Just ask me to summarize.
Yes, Chair, um, despite that fact, we we. We suggest that if it is the intent of the legislature to preserve. Some sort of premium above which other mobility options are insured, that four times is a reasonable standard, so. We appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation and I'm available to answer any questions around. The specifics of Get Around and its specific model or peer to peer car sharing and. Why we're asking for um this refresh. We're aware that there's a legislation that would reduce this to zero. Obviously, that's fantastic. Uh, but we we appreciate this opportunity to opine on this measure. Thank you, Chair.
Good. Um, that's all the testimony we have submitted on this measure. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify? If not, are there any questions?
I have a question for the representative from Get Around. If he's still on in Zoom land.
Still here.
Hi, Mr. McCall. Um, so I understand your justification for that. Are there others? Because I know you guys are in different cities across the world, so how do other cities, how have they? Uh, approach this issue of hour by hour insurance coverage?
That's a good question. Um, in in. In our experience, there isn't typically a bifurcation. Good question, Senator, thank you for that. Um, as it relates to peer to peer car sharing in general. There are different standards of care. So in California, I believe it's three X. In Washington or Oregon, it's it's uh two X or or vice versa. I mean, in many other parts of the country, it's held at the municipal level where it may or may not be more or less. The difference between hourly car sharing and daily car sharing really relates to the user and the host, so. I'll try to be very brief. The majority of users on Get Around's platform nationally. And we're a small platform in Hawaii, right? Some of our competitors like Hui, for example, opened in twenty eighteen. The, you know, Turo got there going uh nine years ago here, so we're relatively new to the marketplace, right? Um, when you look at the national average, most of our users are using debit cards and it tells you something about. The nature of the user. Most of our cars are.
Are are you saying, Mr. McCall, I'm sorry to interject here. Uh, are you saying that in other cities, there are policies? That cover what you're intending to do in this measure?
I'm saying that in other municipalities and states, there are standards of care related to the insurance minimums. That are more reasonable than nearly nineteen times the. Standard insurance rate for other mobility options. That that's right, so.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. McCall. Thank you, Chair.
Any further questions? Um, not, I'd like to follow up briefly, um. Uh, real quick for Get Around, level of insurance uh was sort of the, as you had stated earlier, the the crux of the whole debate over. Um, peer to peer regulation last year. Um. Right now, are you guys operating under that same standard? That that exists now?
We're operating under the standards that are required under the state law, which recently changed, so. You know, we we're we're operating under the standards of care that are in place as it relates to the current. Uh, state minimums. We were at a different standard when we opened in twenty twenty one. Which at that time was roughly three X, three X and some change, the state standards, so. Uh, I I, you know, I'm I'm not, I'm not sure if that's helpful, Senator, but my my point being when Get Around started in Hawaii. Our minimum insurance requirements already far exceeded the state minimums for other, you know, carriers, whether you're. A rental car or a TNC or or another provider.
And then just building on that, in other places. Are there other places besides Hawaii where Get Around is regulated at a higher minimum level of insurance?
Uh, higher than.
I'm sorry, higher than the four times proposed in the bill.
Not that I, not that I'm aware of, I can look into that. I know that in California and Oregon, there are two and three X. I'll get you the specific numbers and happy to send you. You all and the committee members in a a a um. Those specific numbers, both how much more we're paying and what the other options are. Um, but the point being it is not four X the state's minimums and so our thought process was, hey. If we want to pay more, great, um, we've got the data that says we don't need it. But we're also in a unique regulatory environment here in Hawaii.
Let me let me just stop you there for a sec. Um, understood. And yeah, we'd love to follow up on some of that. Um, then real quick, let me turn to Turo, um, if you can come forward. So, um, similarly, you guys have. Been around for a couple of years and and um these these discussions. And the level of insurance was sort of the center of that whole entire debate over the last couple of years. Um, in your testimony, you noted you're paying, well, the existing requirement, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Under Act fifty six.
Right, which which took effect um just now.
Of this year.
Right. But um you're also suggesting that you're opposing this measure because there would be. A dual standard established that would allow others to go lower than that.
Chair, the the, thank you for the the question to to your point, the, I think while there are acknowledgements that, hey, there the minimums. Uh, at least from Get Around's position, that the minimum should be higher. I think the question still remains about why. Uh, one peer to peer company should be assessed at four times the state minimums while the other. Uh, while competitors are set at eighteen point seven five times. And that that is the the crux of of our uh point.
So, um, on that. Uh, similarly, the question I asked, uh, Get Around, is Turo currently required to pay a higher level? Minimums in other jurisdictions where it operates than seven hundred fifty thousand.
You know, Chair, not to my knowledge, I'm happy to follow up on that. Um, I believe that seven hundred fifty thousand represents an outlier relative. To the rest of the nation. Um, other states uh do have, for example, two to three times the minimums. Um, there are some states that I believe align with the state minimums, so. Um, but it would be the case that the seven hundred fifty thousand represents an outlier.
Stroping, uh, I guess that seven hundred fifty thousand level anywhere else besides Hawaii?
You know, the two states that may come to mind, and I have to verify this, I'm happy to follow up with the committee, but uh. Potentially New York and West Virginia. Um, I want to note, though, that there are active discussions in in front of the New York and the. West Virginian state legislatures as well, which again are around uh the minimums and potentially lowering them.
And then, you know, last year, the seven hundred fifty thousand level was a proposal by Turo in its testimony.
I just want to clarify that point because I think that um. The the language that was offered to the committee as a compromise point would have provided. But insured coverage for the host as opposed to the guest. Um, the language that passed in Act fifty six also covered the guest liability. Um, I'm happy to circulate the past testimony as well, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure, yeah, if you could follow up on addition to um uh Get Around uh. Offhand as this discussion, I'm sure moves along because there are other bills on this as well. Um, would love to.
Sure.
So that, oh, Senator Elafante.
Yeah, as a quick follow up on Mr. Ayayagi, uh, to Chair's questioning. So did Turo have a hand in crafting the legislation which what we have now?
Uh, the legislation in front of us or the previous?
The pre, sorry, the previous act that's currently law now.
I believe that we did testify and try and get involved in the measure. However, one point that we were consistent in throughout the whole process was our opposition to. The seven hundred fifty thousand dollar uh minimum uh coverage as it pertained to both uh the guests and the hosts. Um, because it added to to the point that Get Around brought up, our data just doesn't reflect that. That uh insurance minimums is needed.
And as another follow up to that.
Yeah.
When I was at the county, we would get requests for. People using the platform parking on public roadways.
Yes.
So what is the general policy of Turo for people who utilize the platform? Do they have to keep it on their private property? Are they able to use city streets or how does that work?
No, I appreciate the question, Senator. Um, you know, based on my experience, also previously working at the county, it's an issue that uh I. Intimately familiar with. Um, what else is this? We we do have uh policies in place with which we're trying to. Make sure that our hosts are good neighbors and good actors in our community. Um, I just want to offer you folks the same thing that. Which is that like, I I am, if there are any community issues that come up in your neighborhoods, I want you to feel free to call me or email me anytime. I I I think it's incumbent upon us to try and do our best to make sure that we uh reduce the amount of constituent inquiries that are going to your folks as well as the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Can I add to that follow up?
Sure.
But you're not doing the same using, having your cars in our parking garages that's operated by the state and.
Um.
Your cars are not only parked in public. Highways in our neighborhoods, but you're also parking your cars. In our parking garages at the airports throughout the state.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
You're not paying your fair share.
No, thank you for um, thank you for that. Uh, what I will tell you is, one is. You know, I. I personally am not a. I'm personally not uh familiar uh with that and. But what I will also just say is we are in discussion uh with the airports administration about this issue.
Good.
Yeah.
Further questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Um, that is the last measure on our agenda this afternoon. Um, as I mentioned at the very beginning, we have a separate agenda, which is decision making only. On bills that were previously heard in this committee uh on Tuesday and earlier uh before then, so. What we're going to do is uh break for decision making and come back on both of those.
Tuesday, we wanted to testify and between the two of us and make it here and in looking at some of the testimony.
So hold on, let me let me uh go into recess in a minute. I can come chat with you for just a second. Recession. All right, good afternoon. We're reconvening the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts for decision making on our three P M agenda on the bills we. Just heard today, beginning with Senate Bill three eight five relating to transportation. Um, which establishes. Uh, requirements for uh electric rickshaws. Um, note that uh DOT had some comments on this. Uh, we would like to move it forward. Um, to see if some of the uh kinks in this can be ironed out, talking with the stakeholders. Um, noting that we're on a tight timeline, bills have to move to the next committee imminently, so. Uh, want to put a defective date on the measure and see if we can have a further discussion on this. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation to pass SB three eight five with amendments and. For the Committee on Water, Bow, sorry, I meant T S T C A, we're in trance. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Okay, Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Elafante.
Aye.
Senator. Senator Kierho Kaloli.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
No.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 586 relating to transportation. This is one of the two noise measures. Similarly, we'd like to move this on to the Committee on Judiciary so they can take a look at this. This has been an urgent issue in a lot of our urban areas, but would put on a, we'll put on a defective date so we can ensure that we can return to this discussion later on. Any discussion on this? If not, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation to pass SB 586 with amendments with five members present, any voting with reservations, any ayes.
No voting.
Any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 587 relating to transportation, this is the second noise bill. Same recommendation, like to send this on for further discussion, but just adding in a defective date so we can return to it later. Any discussion? If not.
We're going to defective date it.
Yes.
Chair's recommendation on SB 587 is to pass with amendments, any voting with reservations. The Vice Chair will vote with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1084 relating to transportation. I'd like to actually, this is relating to disclosure of potential safety issues. I'd like to turn this into a, or further discussion, but not through the bill. Probably come back with a resolution on this. So for the moment, we're going to defer 1084. Moving on to Senate Bill 1406 relating to commercial motor vehicle fines. Like to move this on as is. Any discussion on this measure? If not, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB 1406 to pass unamended with five members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1405 relating to commercial motor vehicle weight limits. Similarly, we'd like to move this on as is. Any discussion? If not, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB 1405 is to pass unamended with five members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to SB 1164 relating to motor vehicles. This was a interesting, first time we had a discussion of this in the legislature. So I actually want to explore this further, but again, defer this measure for now and probably come back with a resolution later on. Moving on to Senate Bill 1092 relating to penalties. This was the interesting discussion we had with the prosecutor and public defender. Do you want to move this on for further discussion to the Judiciary Committee where that discussion is probably best had? Recognize there are a bunch of issues to be sorted out, and this is the first time I think we've had discussion on this, so I want to keep that going. So what we're going to do is blank out the amounts of penalties and then add in a defective date and send it on to judiciary judiciary to see if they can make something of it. Any discussion on this? If not, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB 1092 to pass with amendments with five members present, any voting with reservations. The Vice Chair will be voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1147 relating to motor vehicles. Seeing all testimony and opposition, defer this measure. Moving on to Senate Bill 214 relating to public transit. We'd like to move this forward with some amendments. Adopting HPD's recommendation on page one, line eight to change the word breakdown to damage. And page one, line 10, changing malfunction to unreasonable interruption. And then adding in a defective date. Any discussion on this measure? If not, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation to pass SB 214 with amendments with five members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1243 relating to traffic control. Oh, this is my bill, so we'll defer it. Come back with a resolution.
That's 1243.
1243. Next is Senate Bill 1056 relating to speed limits. Seeing everyone in support, recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion? If not, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB 1056 is to pass unamended with five members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes.
No.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1502 relating to transportation. This was our peer-to-peer bill that we had a vibrant discussion on at the very end there. I'd like to move this on because there is a discussion to be had and a couple of things that are needed this year. But since this will go on to the Consumer Protection Committee, we want to blank out insurance levels and amounts in the bill. But add explicit authority for the Department of Transportation to regulate airport parking as it relates to peer-to-peer parking in state airports. And then secondly, provide counties the authority to regulate parking of peer-to-peer vehicles on city streets. And then add in a defective date. Any discussion on this? If not, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation to pass SB 1502 with amendments with five members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes.
No vote.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. That's the end of our first agenda from today. So as I noted before, we have our second agenda of carryover bills from prior hearings. So beginning with Senate Bill 479 relating to the Public Utilities Commission. This removes the requirement that common water carriers receive permission from the PUC prior to executing long-term leases. I'd like to move this measure forward, making some amendments. First, changing the three-year limitation to a five-year limitation and limiting the exemption, excuse me, limiting the application to leasing of vessels, which seems to be the major crux of the debate here. And then finally, adding in a defective date. Any discussion? If not, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB 479 to pass with amendments with five members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to SB 517 relating to motorcycles, which authorizes operators' motorcycles to use shoulders. I'd like to move this on as well, but with amendments. DOT and other organizations have raised concerns that bikers, bicyclists use shoulders as well, so you don't want conflict there as well as other things. So we'd like to limit the application of this measure to interstate highways as authorized by Department of Transportation, which should address all those issues. And then secondly, add in a defective date. Any discussion on this measure? If not.
Chair's recommendation to pass SB 517 with amendments with five members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to SB 973 relating to transportation, which requires rental motor vehicle lessors to incorporate zero emissions vehicles into their fleets. We'd like to pass this and move it along, but with some amendments here. We know that there's going to have to be a lot of support to put in EV charging infrastructure all around the state at both public facilities as well as hotels and other things like that for rental car fleets. So we'd like to basically turn this into a task force, which we similarly did last year, tried to do last year, which will incorporate the rental car companies, hotels, other relevant destination stakeholders to develop plans to install EV charging infrastructure to support EV rental car fleets in the future. Secondly, we know that there's a lot of federal money and other funds available to install EV charging capacity. We do not want to enter into a situation where we get to like 2034 when the year before, most major manufacturers are no longer selling gas vehicles and then have all the rental car companies, I think, immediately come to the state, ask them for funds to quickly install charging capacity at all their facilities last minute. So we want to note in the measure also that those companies using state facilities after 2028, after five years from now, will pay on their own dime to install their own charging infrastructure or the equivalent if they're using state charging infrastructure put in at public facilities. That way, there's an incentive to actually get on the ball and not just leave the public completely footing the bill for infrastructure. And then adding in a defective date. So any any questions or comments on that?
Chair's recommendation to pass SB 973 with amendments with five members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Moving on to Senate Bill 382 relating to motor vehicles, which prohibits motor vehicle manufacturers from charging subscription fees for services that employ equipment already installed in a motor vehicle. Like to move this on, but with some substantial amendments. We'll note this just came out of the issue where BMW was charging consumers eighteen dollars a month for features like heated seats that were already included in the vehicle. And now other manufacturers are selling vehicles in which all the features are provided to a consumer at the time of sale, but after several months, the probationary period expires and a number of those features are blocked behind paywalls, which require subscription fees to continue to use, which raises some issues with consumer protection. So what we want to do is keep the discussion going. So I want to amend the bill to address the issues raised by the auto dealers and Tesla and, excuse me, auto manufacturers as well. So first of all, we want to make sure that this does not apply to subscriptions for entertainment, streaming, for things like Spotify and other related data. Secondly, for Tesla and some of the other manufacturers, will not apply to vehicle navigation and those systems which are currently subscription-based. We want to add a preamble to note and explain sort of the intent here. And most of all, add a defective date so that we can ensure that we have another chance at this, but still keep the conversation going as we figure out how to proceed. So with that.
Chair's recommendation to pass SB 382 with amendments with five members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 493 relating to motor vehicle inspections, provides new vehicles don't need safety inspections until five years after the date the vehicle was first sold and makes some other modifications. So we'd like to move this along, but with some substantial amendments and appreciate the input from a lot of the folks from our first hearing when we heard this bill. So we want to turn this into a pilot, which would allow three years grace period before you need a safety inspection for new vehicles, for all new vehicles. And then moving beyond that, because electric vehicles require way less maintenance and don't have nearly the complexity of moving parts. I think there's justification in a pilot to allow that for the first ten years, EVs will only need safety inspections every other year rather than every single year, which should help alleviate some of the difficulty and weights trying to find safety inspections. We also want to specify that EVs in a road usage charge program, which may also soon take effect, would pay their RUC fee based on a self-reported photo of their odometer in the intermediate years in between their safety checks. And while it's self-reported, the next time they go in for their safety check, it will obviously be verified. So that should address some of the issues raised there. Finally, we know this is an ongoing discussion and there's a lot of moving parts to this. We want to add in a defective date to ensure that the discussion continues, but we can always come back to it. So with that, any discussion on this measure?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say thank you for your hard work and and support. Appreciate you hearing it and with the amendments.
Chair's recommendation to pass SB 493 with amendments with five members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. With that, we are adjourned.